I'd like to call to meet in the board. Mr. Burns, could you be real cool?
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
Mr. Feather.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Mrs. Boyle.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Merrington.
Here.
Mr. Perry-Bunton.
Present.
Mr. Donan.
Present.
The board is present.
I'd like to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase of lease or real property and potential or current litigation. The district's mission statement is that the Shammany community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Okay. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report.
Hello, Happy New Year. It's been a little exciting for superintendents in the county and the region. The snow's keeping us busy. I do want to extend a special thank you. The easy snow call is for the students. It's an exciting call that they get. Unfortunately, it's not as easy for a good number of people who work for us here, and I want to thank them especially. Our custodian, maintenance crew, the Thursday snow was a really tough day to be out there trying to keep this property ready to receive students. We were ready on Friday, but there was a concern with the cold and the potential freezing in the morning. And so, as a result, as a precaution, we were actually closed both Thursday and Friday. But I do want to thank everybody who got our properties ready for us to receive students and be ready on this Monday. Transportation, thank you. Today was probably the most difficult on that front, but any day with weather is a tough challenge. And so, we tried to be sensitive on Monday afternoon to the potential, and then again this morning. And I want to thank everybody for that. And our maintenance and mechanics and all of the people who have extra worry as a result of the cold. We had boiler issues. We had a pipe that went over at one of our elementary schools. But we have good, good people taking care of our property, and we want to thank all of them during these times. While our students get to sleep in a little extra on those days and feel really good about it. A lot of people doing a lot of hard work. Our student artwork this month at our public work sessions, we announce who is having their artwork displayed. And so, this is Towanka. Art teacher there, Deborah Deacon, wonderful art educator, has displayed her students' work for us this month. And we just want to thank the students there at Towanka and Ms. Deacon for all that they do to help kind of spread some color and joy. Maple Point is in the superintendent's bulletin, superintendent's report this month because of efforts that they're making with Martin Luther King Day of Service and some contributions they're trying to make to a volunteer group helping to fight addiction. We congratulate them for their work, and if you'd like to help them, there's some notice there in the report where you can help contribute. Congratulations to our FBLA high school students who went out and competed in a regional competition and did very well. We have many students who are moving on to state-level competition, and all of those students at the state level, the first-place winners at least, are announced here in the report. We have two high school students. We've heard Rudy Rusty Kutich's name before and his female counterpart, Kaylee McCullough. Both strong runners, both recognized by the Bucks County Carrier Times as Golden Teen Cross Country Runners of the Year. So, congratulations to the two of them. Our roadies, we have a wonderful, not just musical, instrumental, choral program, but we also have a wonderful drama program here in our school district. And our high school roadies were at a PA State Thespian Conference, performed very well. And we have students continuing on invited to perform an International Thespian Festival at the University of Nebraska in Lincoln in June. So, we congratulate them on their successes at the state level and for those who will be continuing on. I want to personally thank all of our staff who do good work to help support the district mission and help advance our strategic plan. For this last month in December, the following teachers were recognized with our new We Build Futures Award. Ingrid Beck is actually a Bucks County Intermediate Unit teacher, but she's with us on a daily basis and for many years at Hoover, and we thank her. Doug Semino, Kaitlyn Kazinsky, Donna Jackson, Brooke Lesser, Jason Lee, Tim Locke, Kim Mezner, and Lisa Scott. It's a combination of both teachers and support staff across the district who have been recognized by their peers, by their principals, by their supervisors for standing out amongst many who do very, very good work here in our district. And so, it's just a way for us to kind of rally around the good work of some people here in-house. And we thank them for their work. A reminder in the report about the senior tax assistance that's offered, and you can reach out to our business office if you need some more help with that program. And in our monthly reports, we have Dr. Hancock's Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. That's attached to the board agenda, and we have each of our central office people reporting out twice a year. So, that's a report that's just attached there for you as the public and for our board members to keep up with what's happening here across the district one other way. And, Mr. President, we have two presentations.
Joe, before that, you want to announce the special recognition for the Santa family?
Oh, I'm sorry. And we do have a day set aside. I reached out to Mr. Santa. Robert Santa was a board member, unfortunately passed away, served this district well during his time, and we wanted to recognize, it was announced here that we would look to recognize him at Miller Elementary School where his children went to school, actually, one of his daughters is still there. And so, we're going to have a program there on Tuesday, January 23rd at 5:00 PM. A very simple opportunity to put a plaque there at the school and to thank the family for Dad's service to the school district. So, people are welcome to join us, and I'm sure we'll have some board members out to meet the family and shake some hands. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I guess we have a pre-K count?
We do have a pre-K count update, and I'll start with Dr. Orlando, who is our principal at Schweitzer and responsible liaison person for our program, and she has a couple of people with her tonight, too. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm proud to be here with Dr. Deb Locke, who is the Assistant Director of Special Ed for the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and she will be sharing and introducing a short video as well. As Mr. Jones shared, I'm the principal at Albert Schweitzer Elementary School. Pre-K Counts has been in the district for 10 years, and it's been an ongoing program led by Dr. Christine McKee, who is in the audience. So, we thank her for all of her efforts and all of her drive in helping initiate a lot of these great programs that are currently in our district. The 1718 Pre-K Counts grant currently serves 53 families in the Shammany School District. There are 19 families at Schweitzer that are serviced, and then there are 34 other families that are serviced at the former Lower South Elementary School. In our building, we're happy to have them. We have two classrooms of pre-K students. They join us in a lot of our activities, in our assemblies, in our school meetings. They participated in our Halloween parade. It's been a great addition to our school, and we welcome them with open arms. I'm also part of the team with the, in coordination with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, with the P3 team and the Governor's Institute, and we meet regularly to talk about the transition, early learning standards, and make sure we focus on school readiness for those children. So, the benefit for us at Schweitzer is some of those children currently enrolled in our program at Schweitzer will be our students moving forward. So, getting an awareness of their needs, collaborating with the reading specialist, collaborating with the counselor, working with the teachers, and having information in hand. We're looking forward to working together more and also having more assessments in place so we have better knowledge of how to better serve them moving forward. So, it's really about that transition. Currently, our kindergarten teachers and pre-K teachers are working on shadowing each other so that they can also learn and share some of those expectations and readiness skills from pre-K to K. So, we're really excited to be a part of that. In a few minutes, you'll see some of the activities that they might do in the preschool classroom, and Dr. Deb Locke is also going to explain a little bit about the curriculum and a little bit on behalf of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit of some of the pieces they do when we collaborate together. So, thank you for sharing them with us at Schweitzer.
Thank you, Dr. Orlando, and thank you, Mr. Jones and school board, for inviting us to come and speak with you. I think people got a little worried when I walked in with my books and a lot written down on the piece of paper, but I promise that I'm not going to go into any of this. What I'd like to do is introduce the video to you and to share just a couple of things that you won't see in the video. I believe that a picture speaks loudly, and so, there's lots of wonderful things, particularly the smiles of the children will, I'm sure, touch you, and they will speak to the safe, nurturing, high-quality environment that they're involved in. What you won't see is what is happening behind the scenes, and that is a lot of the work that the P3 Governor's Institute team began last summer. You may or may not recall that you approved a team of teachers to go with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit out to Hershey to begin the conversation, and it's a really exciting conversation from my perspective. I used to be an elementary principal, and I would have loved to have had the ear of the pre-K community to have that conversation about how we can get our kids really ready to come into kindergarten. So, now, we have that opportunity. We're excited about it, and we know, and I know, having worked with Dr. Hancock for just a short period of time, how important it is to also engage the families in the conversation about how best to support our little people on this journey called education. And so, what you don't see is the work that we're doing with family engagement. There will be a family networking event in the spring, probably in March, that will be held at the Lower Southampton Early Learning Center, and all of the Shammany families will be invited to that. We have already had an event for all the preschools that serve your students, your incoming students in the community, which was well-attended, and it was our first event, so we were really excited about that. And it's about networking all of those people around high-quality early childhood education. So, I'm not going to share anymore. I'm going to let you look at the video. I'll let you know that Mrs. Liz Bailing is the teacher that you will see mostly in this video. She comes to us with 14 years of experience in pre-K counts. But know also that the classrooms are filled with children that are being funded through the Pre-K Counts Grant, but also through a Head Start Grant and also early intervention students. So, our special ed students are all included in these classrooms. So, they will be ready and will have already experienced being in an elementary school before they walk into your elementary schools, which really gives them a head start. So, without further ado, I'm sure Chris is somewhere with the video, and we'll just, if you have any questions about it, we'll answer those after the video. Thank you.
One of these, you pick one color, trace the letters. So, we wrote "Dear" bottom. You pick a color. So, you wrote the first letter.
Hello, I'm Amy Orlando, and I'm the principal at Albert Schweitzer Elementary School. We're really excited to receive the Pre-K Counts Grant this year and are currently hosting two preschool classrooms at our building. This is one of two sites for Pre-K Counts in our district. The second site is located at the former Lower Southampton Elementary School. We have a team from our building, including myself, a kindergarten teacher, and reading specialist, along with teachers and administrators from the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, collaborating together. The goal is to develop curriculum alignment and a positive transition when our students are moving from pre-K to kindergarten. We hope you enjoy visiting the pre-K classrooms from Ms. Bailing and Ms. Morgan.
Is this as tall as Jimmy?
She's this.
Is it as tall as Jimmy, or do we need one more?
My favorite thing to do in preschool is paint and color.
What we have happening over here, we have art center. The girls are painting with watercolor paints, and art center helps to promote, among other things, color recognition and fine motor control, the way they're gripping the paintbrushes. Over here in the block center, the children decided to build blocks as tall as the teacher and then were prompted to build blocks as tall as the children and count using one-to-one correspondence. So, knowing that every time that they touch a block that it is associated with a number. Thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four. And then, we also have at our middle table here, we have, unfortunately, a student who's out sick and has been for a while. We miss her, so we're working on making get well cards. So, we're talking about the process of writing, the grip that the children need to use on the markers. They're picking sentences to write, and some children might already recognize the letters, whereas others need some encouragement or a little help in identifying the letters, writing them. This one has a capital L, and that one starts with a lowercase l.
Something that we can land on.
This one's blue. What's this one?
Ooh.
What are you guys making?
A book. All the houses.
Ouch. Fifty-one, fifty-two.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. How many blocks tall is Jimmy?
Three, fifty-three.
You are 53 blocks tall.
Everybody have a seat on the floor. Not on the ceiling, not on the door. Everybody have a seat on the floor.
On the ceiling.
Snowman, snowflake, snowflake. You must be the snowman.
I know.
Ladies, I have a few more things to add just to round out your presentation. Does anybody have any questions about our preschool program?
Yes, I'd like to know how I can enroll. That looks like a lot of fun.
Looks like a fun day. Little did we know how much fun school was. Listen, a couple of things I just want to make sure that I make a point of. Number one, we take for granted the video work that Chris Stanley does. That's professional quality. You may notice that Dr. Orlando does not wear this outfit every day. That was done today. It was supposed to be another day, but the weather really pushed us around a little bit. But for him to put together such a high-quality video with the talkover and the like, he just does, he does very, very good work. And so, I thank him for what he does to help us showcase our students and our teachers. This relationship with the IU is new this year. We've had other outside vendors who've supported our program, who've run our program for us. And so, in moving around, this is now a chance to work with the IU, and we've been really glad to have the partnership with the educational people there at the IU who provide some nice support as we grow our program. And I have to, I don't know why Dr. McKee is sitting in the back. She just likes to do this. But Dr. Christine McKee is the reason Shammany has preschool programming. We spent a lot of time last year talking about how can we grow it more, but she took it from its infancy, half-day program to full day, grew it into, to have more seats, and then we were able to add even more this last year, another 17, I think, were the, how many more? Nineteen this year? So, 50-plus students in pre-K Counts. But when you couple the fact that Lower South is right here in our school district, and you think about the Head Start Program that the IU runs, you talk about the special ed, early intervention programs that are out there, and that we've now have this coordinated effort, and there's actually even some pre-K Counts that's right outside our border, right on our border, run by the United Way. There are 140 Shammany students who are ages three and four, who are involved in high-quality educational programming. So, that's the effort that we're talking about. Dr. Orlando is really going to kind of take the reins in terms of trying to coordinate that early childhood education program, transition into the school. It's not the only effort that's out there, obviously. There are a lot more than 143 and four-year-olds out there. But we will look, the government and the state, the state governor, state government have endorsed preschool programming, extra $25 million. This last year, though, Governor Wolf had put in 75 million. So, if they turn around and put more money in, we'll look to expand our program because we have more kids on a waiting list, ready to go. So, thank you, ladies. You did a great job. Appreciate your time tonight.
Mr. Jones, what, do we have any idea, or perhaps, Dr. Orlando, any idea how many more kids or how many kids are on that waiting list?
There are 31 families on the waiting list.
Thirty-one. Thank you. Oops. Because of the fact that we were growing the program, Chris Stanley and Dr. McKee worked very closely together to expand our outreach, and so, we probably attracted the extra this time around. So, we know that we could be able to handle a couple more classrooms easily, probably many more. When you think in terms of, most of our grade levels are about 600 students. The 50 students include three- and four-year-olds, so we're far from. And there are income threshold needs, but even if you look at our free and reduced lunch population of 30% approximately, using a rough number, that would be about 180 four-year-olds that we could really serve, that would be able to qualify for that program. So, there's great opportunity, great opportunity for growth. The program's fully funded by the state through Pre-K Counts, and so, you know, the district really is, supports with some facilities there, space there, but even that, you know, we have some opportunity to utilize some state monies there. But we're in good position to serve those students, and we're looking to grow and include more.
One of my concerns, you know, lies with our alignment with the independent, you know, local daycares that support a lot of these programs and how we're interfacing with them to align our curriculum hopefully with theirs. So, when their students move up into, you know, our kindergarten program beyond, that they're prepared. How much of that interaction are we carrying on with?
I would say, in the past, Dr. McKee is very good at networking, but this initiative that we're talking about, the Governor's Pre-K to Three Initiative that both ladies spoke about, is really the beginning of that kind of conversation. How do we do better work in district, and then that ultimately is going to spread out to talk about including those entities that you're talking about. So, we're excited about the potential for that.
Because, you know, this, it's a great program. I'm very leery about, you know, relying on state funding, you know, for continuing it. You know, you get to a point where you develop something, and then if the funding goes away, you know, then, you know, you lose all that that you put into it because it, for us to carry it internally, you know, would be, you know, a strain. So, I see bridging that gap between, you know, our program and trying to align ourselves with the pre-K programs that are out there that are running independently, called a backup or the backbone of the system, because I don't foresee us, you know, being able to get to the hundreds of kids, you know, in the program. And there's already an infrastructure in place to support these kids. An alignment between us and them could, you know, really be, I think, yield benefit to our students.
100% agree with everything you just said, and I'm afraid if I keep talking, you're going to start bringing up Peasers, but, but the reality is that there are some states that fund fully preschool education because they recognize it as a priority. So, obviously, right now, Pennsylvania is tilting in that direction, looking to provide more of that funding, recognizing that, you're right, local districts can't absorb that burden on top of everything else that we're doing. But you make great points, and it's good that the ladies are hearing you say all that.
But at the very least, maybe some sort of a program to communicate with those entities so that we're also involved in preparing those children at those levels so that when they get to our school system, they're prepared, they're ready to go.
The good news is we're having those conversations. So, our last networking event, as Dr. Locke had shared, was with the community preschools in the area. And that really was to begin that networking, begin those conversations, to align each other and make sure we're sharing out those curriculums and those expectations and those early learning goals so that we are consistent. And then, the benefit of having our kindergarten teacher, her pre-K teachers, our reading specialist, all involved in that conversation, again, talking about alignment, looking at, you know, the needs coming in, what are the expectations? And then, just the benefit of, these are students that normally wouldn't likely get that preschool education if it weren't for the grant. So, just balancing out, you know, the expectations are the same no matter what family you're coming from when you enter kindergarten. There's no, you know, because you come from here or there, there's different expectations. The standards are the standards. So, we are having those kinds of conversations. So, the great news is with those kinds of networking events, we're able to talk about and share and hopefully move forward and grow together so that we are being consistent across the board.
I just had a quick question on what exactly, what are the goals as far as, what jumped out at me was you have a reading specialist. What are the goals to prepare them in pre-K? What are, what do you?
To talk a little bit about the pieces of, a few components of the curriculum?
Yes, I did. And I'm curious what they're...
That might be helpful.
No, that's okay. I didn't share all this because it can get lengthy, so I'm going to do, no. We use the Pennsylvania Early Learning Standards and the Early Learning Outcomes Framework that was put out by Head Start, and those are the standards that we use, and we have developed a curriculum around that. I can go through each one of those things for you, but you, it is all the domains of learning. One of them that may not be familiar to you is the approaches to learning. And because in elementary school, that's already happened. So, that's all about initiating exploration, doing those very basic skills when people come to us, things we take for granted. A lot of the social-emotional skills are developed before kids come to kindergarten, and that's a big focus of what we do. But the cognitive domains, the physical development, all of those things are within our curriculum. We use creative curriculum materials to deliver that curriculum, and that's through studies, basically. And I also have to tell you that at the Intermediate Unit, we're doing a complete review of our early childhood curriculum so that we're making sure we are using the very best curriculum materials. So, that's happening also. But at the moment, we, it is a standards-based, research-based curriculum that we do use, and everything is, goes back to the early learning standards that are put out by the state of Pennsylvania. So, it's not willy-nilly, and when you look in an early childhood classroom, it looks, it is play, but we learn through play. There's a lot of intentional teaching that happens there. One of the things that I would invite you to do if you're interested is please come to our classrooms. I'd be happy to meet you there so I can explain some of the intentionality that may be, may not be obvious because that's, we take a lot of things for granted that other people would know what was happening in the classrooms. We have assessment happening, formative assessment happening just about every moment in the classroom, that either the teacher's assistant or the teacher herself. We use Teaching Strategies Gold, which is an online system that allows us to take formative information about what kids are doing because it's more about observation than anything else, is what is the child able to do in the context of the learning environment. So, there's lots of books we could share, and certainly, the early learning standards are on the PDE SAS website that you probably have seen from other presentations.
Thank you. I'm a product of Shammany Kindergarten, myself, and all I remember is naptime and milk and cookies. Just saying.
That's all we want you to remember, but a whole lot more was happening, we hope. So, I want to thank the ladies. The goal here was for you to be able to hear, for us to be able to celebrate, and for everyone to know that Shammany does have this program and is doing this work at this age level. Thank you, ladies. I say to the students when they're here, this is always a good time to sneak out if you want. You're welcome to do so. And Dr. McKee, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
I just want to have a shout-out to Dr. McKee, who has been with us forever. Dr. McKee was the principal of the original Towanka when it closed and has been a real great asset to Shammany. So, it's nice to see you again, Dr. McKee.
Thank you. Same to you. Now, that will bring us to the annual audit review for the 2016-17 school year. And Mr. Ed Furman from the firm of Malley is here to do the presentation. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks for having me. And...
Thanks for having me, and we've completed the audit, and we've issued the full financial statements, which I believe you have. What I did is I put together an overall summary called the Audit Presentation, which is a smaller document, which I thought I'd run through and hit some of the highlights with that. The first page in the handout is just the agenda items that we're going to be covering. The page after that is called Required Communications, and we issued an unmodified clean opinion on the financial statements. We also test what's called a single audit test, and based on the amount of federal funds you receive, the federal government dictates what testing we have to do. The main testing there is internal controls and compliance with the funding. And there, we issued clean, unmodified opinions on the single audit also. We issued what's called a SAS 114 report, and that's an audit committee letter, and any audit clients we have, we have to report to the highest level of management, which would be, as the school board, if we had any problems with the audit, issues, difficult transactions, and we had nothing to report there, that was a clean report. The 115 report would be if there were material internal control weaknesses, that would be issued, and we did not issue a 115 letter. The page after that, what I did is just, really did, did a summary of some of the audit testing that we do, hitting some of the spots there, cash and investments, if you have any bank account balances that are beyond FDIC coverage, the banks require under Act 72 with the state to pledge federal collateral four-year accounts for protection, and we confirm that that exists. Further down the page, some of the things we do differently, we do a lot of electronic auditing. We actually download 100% of the transactions of the district, run it through our audit software, we're looking for anomalies, material transactions, gaps in check sequences, so really based, based on that data, and especially in the expenses, we run pivot tables. So each expense item, we run month-by-month summaries, we can compare that to prior year, and again, we're looking for unusual items or potentially duplicate payments. So we do a lot, a lot with our audit software, a lot of data analytics, some employee testing, we actually compare addresses in the employee file with addresses in the vendor file to see if anyone's showing up as vendors. We're looking for duplicate direct deposit bank accounts there, and all the testing we had was clean and no exceptions. We also run what's called a Benford's Test, and I think I had mentioned that last year, but the next two pages. Benford was a mathematician who came up with the formula that based on certain size of a population, so many transactions would start with the digit 1, and a lesser amount 2 through 9. So since we have all, all the data in our system, we just run this chart, and you'll see that the first Benford chart pretty much came in with what we anticipate or what was projected. So for example, under column one, you've got close to 18,000 transactions for the year, which starts with the digit 1, and a lesser amount through 2 through 9. Nothing really jumped out on this testing, so then we ran a, a two-digit Benford test, which was the next page, and there we had a couple that spiked out, and then we actually drilled down into that activity, and that's the basis for, for the testing that we do in some of the dispersments area. The last page of the summary is, what I did is do a three-year analysis, since the main financials only have one year of data in it. And the first top section is called the Government-Wide Financial Statements. So in those financials, that's a full accrual method of accounting, you capitalize your fixed assets, you record depreciation expense, debt's recorded as liability, almost like a for-profit financial statement. So hitting some of the highlights there in, in the balance sheet or statement in that position, you'll see that the cash went down in 2017, but it really went into the capital assets. Capital assets went up about $16 million, and then we had about $7 million of depreciation expense, which shows that, that net difference in the capital assets. The accounts payable number went down, which was part of the use of the cash. Same with the debt, the debt's decreased the last three years. Compensated absences, that's accrued vacation and sick time, that's been pretty stable. The next liability is called an OPEB obligation, and what that is, is it's other post-employment benefits, and that's a real soft liability. The fact that you provide coverage for retirees, they're, they're paying the full amount under COBRA, but the accounting pronouncement determined that having an older section as part of your policy group would raise the intrinsic costs for the whole district. So an actuary actually does this, this calculation where the actuary estimates when someone's going to retire, and what the medical coverage will be when they retire. So again, that's a pretty soft liability where you're not writing a check tomorrow for it, and that's actually been going down the last two years, which is positive trend. Significant liability, the accounting pronouncements changed back in 2015, which required you to now record as a liability on your balance sheet, your piece of the unfunded Peasars liability. So the total Peasars liability is about $24 billion. Peasars then allocates that to the 500-plus districts, and unfortunately, your share is almost $290 million of that liability, and that liability has been going up the last two years. So with that liability, your net position or net equity of the district is actually a negative $170 million, but you'll see that that's really related to the pension liability. And what we're seeing is that bond rating agencies are well aware of that, they're sort of taking that out of their calculation as far as rating your financial statements.
Can I ask one question, since you're right there, Ed?
Sure.
The net position went down $22 million, but the pension liability increased by $39 million, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so, all right.
Yes.
So a lot of the...
Yeah, I didn't put the full balance sheet, just the major, major items in there. So again, unfortunately, that's your share of the liability, and again, as I mentioned, the bond rating people have sort of been excluding that in their, their ratings. Revenue and expenses, the property tax revenue has been fairly stable the last three years, same with the grant revenue. The instruction expense had the largest increase over the last two years, and remember that you had an increase in the pension liability, so that's part of that increase, is recording that pension expense. Most of the other categories were pretty stable or pretty flat, so you had a net change of a deficit of about $12 million on the full accrual financial statements. And remember, you've got $7 million of depreciation expense, which is part of that deficit along with the pension liability. The governmental funds is the second set of financial statements, and this is how you keep your books daily, how you do your budgeting. The government-wide financial statement's really just a once-a-year calculation. So your general fund fund balance at the end of 2017 was almost $36 million. That went down by $4 million from the prior year. However, the general fund fund balance is about 20% of your general fund revenues, and bond rating agencies are looking for a safe harbor of 8% to 10%, so you're well above that figure. And that actually, fund balance allowed you to, you've made a commitment of $12 million for potential stabilizing Peasars, and you also assigned $3 million of that fund balance to capital projects. So again, the size of that fund balance is giving you some flexibility to, to commit or assign funds going forward in the future.
Ed, let me ask you a question right there, please. In your opinion, if we didn't have that set aside for Peasars, how would that affect our rating as far as how the bond companies would look at us rating-wise, not having that safety net?
If you get under that 8% of revenue in the general fund, you'd have a tough time maintaining your, your current debt rating.
Did you mean the Peasars reserve, or did you mean the total reserve?
Yeah, out of that 36 million, you've designated 12 million for future, yeah, and that's not a legal restriction, so you as a board can change that tomorrow, but at least it's giving you some...
I understand that, but with the outstanding liability, I'm just wondering how it's going to impact in the future.
Yeah, what you'll be getting shortly from us is that we've summarized all the data from our, we've got 28 school district clients, and just to give you a feel on how you compare to others, and you'll see that the size of that fund balance that you'll have will be higher than, than the majority of the other districts, and that gives you some flexibility for, at least for stabilizing the Peasars going forward. I mean, that rate doesn't seem to be going down over the next couple of years, unfortunately.
But are the bond ratings companies looking at the total fund balance or the Peasars reserve?
No, the total fund balance, yes.
Total fund balance, right, yeah.
Yeah, because again, the other isn't a legal restriction, it's just, if you had an emergency or other capital projects, you could switch that going forward.
Right. If you didn't have the fund balance, you wouldn't have the Peasars, right. Well, FASB didn't change the, the pension funding would be okay.
No, in fact, in fact, the bond rating people, the government-wide, they're sort of almost ignoring those and going right to your general fund, because that's how you do your budgeting, that's how you do the day-to-day accounting, and that's your main operations. Those other liabilities, like I said, the OPEB is a real soft liability, and the pension liability, you know, is probably a 20, 25-year liability that you're, you're dealing with.
The $4 million net change in fund balance under 2017?
Yes.
That's from the governmental standpoint, so that's our...
That's your operating general fund.
So that's our expenses being greater than our revenues.
Yes, you had budgeted about a nine, I think it was nine and a half million dollar use of the fund balance, and it came in at about $4 million. Revenue was pretty close to budget, the actual, for the year, so the, really, the decrease dealt with savings on the expense side. The expenses came in about $6 million better than budget for the general fund.
Okay. But we were still $4 million short of expenses?
That's correct.
Of expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and you were talking about bond rating concerns, if they continue to see that going down $4 million a year and going below that safe harbor number, that's going to be an issue, that's going to be an issue, to be honest with you.
But part of that is, we already had planned that the $2 million would come out of Peasars, and that's part of this $4 million, and $1 million for the technology infrastructure.
Right, and it was positive that you were, you were $6 million favorable on the expense side in total for the year.
I under, I understand that, but I meant the trend that has started. To get into this current year, we don't know where we're going to be, but we expensed $5.2 million or $5.6 for this current year, so now you're going to get into the compounding effect, and that's what I'm trying to get at.
You will have issues fund balance-wise if you continue using that up and working its way down.
Yeah.
You've got great flexibility now, but you can't keep eating it up each year. The Food Service Fund is another separate fund. The net position or net equity there is a deficit, because the pension liability, Peasars also allocated that fund with the employees that are in that group, so the pension liability in the food services, close to $5 million liability. Bottom of the page, we talked about budget to actual, again, you had budgeted a $9.5 million fund balance deficit, and it came in at $4 million. And the single audit work I had mentioned, which is the federal funding testing, had no findings to report on there.
I have one question on, on page 11 of the audit report, I don't know, this may not be a fair question for you, so you may have to get back to us on this.
Okay.
It talks about 174 million, $174 million of revenues, which I think is what was our budgeted number, and then our total expenses on this, on 2017, it's government-wide, was 186,000?
Correct, 186 million.
Million, 186 million.
Yes.
Yeah, right, okay. What...
For the, for the government-wide, again, you've got the increase in the pension liability as part of that, and you have depreciation expense that's in that number too.
Okay, all right.
So the government-wide, again, even the concept of depreciation is tough for a government, you know, while you're amortizing that, but the government-wide is at full accrual, and that's where he came in with the, the $12 million deficit for the year.
Okay.
Versus the $4 million on a general fund, which is mainly your day-to-day operating fund.
So those two items would be an $8 million swing, pretty much?
That's correct, and mainly from depreciation expense.
Okay, got it. You're welcome.
I don't know if there's any other questions at this point. Yeah, it's a solid balance sheet, especially when you carve out the, the pension and the OPEB liabilities, and very strong fund balance.
I think we're good. Ed, thank you for the presentation, appreciate the time.
But thanks for having us, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the public comment section of the meeting. Mr. Burns?
There was no sign-ups for a public comment.
Want to go to, want to go to the second round?
No, because I have something to, that applies.
Well, if you want to go, go, it's fine.
I saw Mr. Rotis at the high school this morning, I thought he got all his questions out then.
No, but...
Good evening, Mr. Rotis.
Good evening to all you, I am Steve Rotis. Happy New Year to one and all. One thing I did learn so far tonight is I know how to handle this class I'm going to have tomorrow at the high school. So, so you can learn something by coming here. I do...
Ed, I think he has some questions.
I, I do have a question for you. My question is, in previous years, didn't you include about 10 years' worth of comparisons between prior budgets and expenses and the year at hand?
The full comprehensive annual financial report, I think Barbara is still working on the stats.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
Okay, that is, that is...
I mean, that's not what we make the...
Okay, that's, because that's what I like best, is to see how we're doing long-term. I did have, I did have six items I wanted to talk about, two of which, two, two of, two of which have been handled. I, I wanted to thank Mr. Jones for including the district's approach to closing the schools in inclement weather, which was included in, in the handout. I don't know why people ask me, what's the district's policy on it, but I thank you for that, and I, I can show people where it is. Now, I, I did want to ask the district to reinstate what they used to do when they had the students from the student government at the high school. They used to come and give reports at least monthly, and I think that should be reinstituted because I thought it gives the kids, you know, an opportunity to see what really goes on, and not that they're, they're hidden away. I did want to know if there's any increase in data or opinions on later starting of the high school itself. I know that they're going to do it, and they may, may do it in Boston, they may also do it in Princeton, they've been talking about it in Princeton. I had, I would like to see a concerted effort to expand our pre-K program, and you did a whole presentation, so I figure in about 20 more years, you'll get ahead of me, and I won't have to come in and ask for things. Yeah. So, I did, two last things, I'd like to see a serious retirement incentive proposal to district teachers and other employees. It's my belief that if done properly, a retirement incentive could save significant amounts of money. And finally, I would like to see the resurrection of the Play Wikian to its former place as the top newspaper in student journalism. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the items for approval at the public meeting.
Discussion.
Discussion. Any comments?
Can you read them?
On the overnight trips, is, usually we get a much broader form on that, that has more information on that. I don't know why we don't have that this time.
I don't believe that, most recently, we have been, but we can give you more information, or maybe it's just certainly for some unusual trips, we can be more cognizant to make sure we get that information to you.
There is one on there. There is, is it attached? Because I couldn't find it.
Look under...
Look under the agenda item, details.
No, he's talking about, he's looking for more detail in terms of the purpose of the trip, you know, all of that. So I think what's probably happened is, we can be more specific to some of those trips.
Yeah, I mean, I have no objection to it. Yeah, I have no objection to it, I just want more information on it's being properly handled, that's all.
No problem.
I can read them off what they are, in case. It's 2.01 is overnight trips, 2.02 is appointment of individuals to the Bucks County Technical School Authority, 2.03 is the approval of the 2016-17 audit report, 2.04 is budget transfers, and 2.05 is the 2018-19 proposed preliminary budget. Okay, that brings us to the committee reports, and we will start with business operations. Mrs. Hollenback?
Our next business operations meeting is next Tuesday, January 16th, right here in this room, 6:30. We will be talking about the budget. Hope everybody comes out to talk to us about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Educational development, Ms. Boyle, and due policy also.
The next educational development meeting will be February 20th, 6:30 in the boardroom, and we are going to discuss the new academic initiatives. And the policy will be on the 30th, and we're going to review the PSBA recommendations for this policy series 600, which is finance, and series 700, which is property.
And you did so well on those two, why don't you do the IU board too?
Well, actually, the IU board is going to be January 16th, 7 o'clock in Doylestown.
Thank you. The Shaminie Education Foundation, Mr. Feather?
The Shaminie Educational Foundation has done many good things over the past year, have provided many opportunities for students and to involve the community in helping to establish some opportunities for our students and the community moving forward. We look forward to that organization doing much more for the students and the community. We thank you for your past support, and we look forward to everyone being more involved and helping us to increase those funds and the opportunity for our students to do much more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feather. PSBA liaison, Mr. Piratino.
At this time, there's really not much to report. Just recently, I did send an email to all members with the updates on the legislation that was passed late last year. There's really no changes to that. As the information comes in, I'll try and keep forwarding to our members, and hopefully it's all good news, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you for that concise report. And technical school, Mr. Allen?
Yes, technical school, we had our meeting back on, and I wrote it down, I lost it, it was back December, I believe it might have been the 18th. Mr. Kovitz, Ms. Bowman, and myself are our representatives. We had our reorganization meeting, as you know, Mr. Jones is our superintendent tech school. Under Joe Gilio of Marsville School District has agreed to remain president of the school board for another year, as the three of us are still new to the tech board, we didn't want to upset the apple cart yet. And myself, as the first vice president, and Mr. Joe Adamson as second vice president, and Mr. Adamson, I'm sorry, is from Bristol Borough School District. The only thing, the main thing that's going on right now is the articles of agreement. We are ongoing discussion as to changing some of the funding formula, make it a little easier, it was a little bit cumbersome, as I think we all know, and try and streamline it as to a better picture of what's actually going on and the district's usage of the tech school. That is ongoing, so I haven't given any details on that just yet. Also, discussion, some disagreement as to the bond issue for some renovation and expansion going on over there. Then I just want to say, I'm thrilled to be on the tech board because, it brings me home a bit, because my father spent several years teaching at the tech school, and I'm very familiar with that area, and I think it's a huge community asset. I'm thrilled that it's still alive and kicking and doing well.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the second public comment period. Anyone want to rush up? Anyone have any future topics?
I've had a short conversation with a few other board members that have received complaints. Now, granted, it's been extremely cold in the district, a lot colder it's been the last couple seasons, and some of our buildings maybe haven't gotten fired up in time over the holiday. I've got some, you know, parents that called wanting to know why, you know, the rooms aren't heated. It's probably minor in scope, but I brought this up last year, you know, we really haven't had an update on our Giza operations. Not talking about the project anymore, talking about the operations.
Excuse me, I already asked, I sent...
Oh, you did?
I sent Superintendent Joe an email asking if Reynolds could come out and give us a presentation on where we stand with all the controls and everything.
All right, thank you, thank you for doing that, that's really great, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenback. That brings us to the board comment section of the meeting. Feel free.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate Mr. Jones's comments about our, you know, our support staff and the wonderful work they did clearing out the schools, driveways, you know, preparing the schools for whatever eventuality, whether children were coming or not, they have to get up anyway. And the school bus drivers, during those pretty nasty conditions, I was out in them myself. Hey, all power to you, your vehicle's certainly bigger than mine. I just wanted a shout-out to them, fantastic job, and winter's not over.
I'd like to also give a shout-out to the support staff working at Bequesting. We had a problem with the pool last week, and we had a very important swim meet coming up Saturday, and they worked very hard to get the chemicals back, to get the temperature up. It was a little cool on the pool deck, but I understand they're working through that, Tina's looking into that, having a presentation come out, but thank you, and just to let you know, the boys actually won that meet. So thank you very much for your hard work.
All right, now that Steve's good, I think, the only thing I wanted to say was I wish everyone a happy new year, looking forward to a productive year in this seat, and everyone else I'm sure is looking forward to a productive year, and with that, make a motion to close the meeting. So moved.
Comments, questions, or concerns?
Any comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?